Haré Rama, haré Ramo, Rama Rama, haré haré. Hare Krishna, so thank you for joining in for Prabhupada Book Study Session today. Om Jnana Timrandasya, Jnana Anjanah, Shalakhaya, Chaksharon Militam Yena, Tasmai Sri Gurave Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Navanobishtham Stapitam Yena Bhutale Swayam Rupa Kadhamayyam Dada Tisva Pradantikam. Mandeham Sri Goro, Sri Vedapadakmalam Sri Gurun Vaishnavamcha. Sri Rupam Sagrijatam Sahagnar Gunathan Vitam Tam Sajivam. Sadvaitam Savadutam Parijanasahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Padan Sahagnalalita Sri Vishakhan Vitamcha. Namom Vishnu Padhayah Krishna Preeththaya Bhutale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namini. Namaste Saraswate Devé Gauravani Prachari Ne. Nirvisé Esha Shunyavadi Paschakya Desha Karine. Namom Mahavadanyaya Krishna Prema Pradhayate Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gauradusheenamaha. Panchadattva Atmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swarupakam Bhakta Avataram Hukta Khyamna Mami Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagatpade. Gopesh Gopika Khanta Sri Radha Khanta Namusute. Taptakha Anjanagaurangi Radhe Vrinda Agneswari Rishabhano Sudedevi Pranamami Hari Priyé. Mancha Kalpatarubiyashka Krpa Sindhu Beevacha Patitana Pavne Bhyo Vaishnave Bhyo Namom Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nikyananda Sri Advaitragada Sri Vasari Gaur Bhakta Vrinda. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Ramo, Rama Rama, haré haré. Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaaya Tharali Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Tharli Bhaktaaya Namom Namaha. Mookam Karothi Vachalam Pangum Langkayate Girim Yat Krpa Tamaham Mandeham Sri Gurundinakarinam. Pramanandam Agavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Ishwaram Hari Om Tat Sat. Hare Krishna, so I request all the devotees switch on your cameras, I am on the gallery view. What we will do now, we will do one round of chanting of Hare Krishna Mahammantra. Where we will all time ourselves, one round, how many minutes are we taking? So we should be ideally taking six to seven minutes for one round of Hare Krishna Mahammantra. So let's see how long we are taking. If you are taking less than five minutes, that means we are swallowing the mantra. Ashaashaashaashaasha, right? Five minutes, four minutes like that means that's what you're doing. But if you are chanting, if you are taking eight minutes, seven and a half minutes, eight minutes, nine minutes. That means you are chanting and then two, three minutes we are dozing away. Either we are sleeping in between or we are thinking of what subject to make in the afternoon. All that is going on in the mind. So let us time ourselves, then we will see how long we are taking. Okay, so let's start, okay, I am also switching on my timer. Okay, best thing is to do a voice recorder. If you have a feature in your mobile, record your own Japa. And then later after the session, what you can do, first of all, we will share here how much time we are taking. And after the session is over, you play your recording. See if you can, if you are chanting in a yourself, self-assessment, right? So we we check if our pronunciation is clear and also are we chanting hundred and eight times or not? Sometimes we say, haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, and then one beat is already moved. So I actually we are chanting less number of times, not hundred and eight times. That also we can check, one is our pronunciation. Secondly, we can also check our whether we are chanting indeed hundred and eight times, right? We can do it later in the day, right? If our chanting is six minutes only, so we can very easily check that, right? When we play, we will be, we will be checking out on that, right? So it's a good investment to ensure that we chanting quality rounds. Right, your quality round means which is chanted properly with proper pronunciation. Proper hearing of the chanting and in a prayerful mood and it takes between six to seven minutes. That's what is ideal time for chanting, okay? So let us start chanting, I would request all devotees, I can see Karpa Gavili Mataji, Ramya Mataji. Rishabhanu Kanya Mataji, all three, all three of you only are switching on the camera. Okay, fine, no problem, but switch on your recorder and then we will start chanting. Namom Vishnu Padhayah Krishna Preeththaya Bhutale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namini. Namaste Saraswate Devé Gauravani Prachari Ne. Nirvisé Esha Shunyavadi Paschakya Desha Karine. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nikyananda Sri Advaitragada Sri Vasari Gaur Bhakta Vrinda. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama. Rama, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama. Rama, Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama. Rama, Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré, Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré. Haré, haré. Hare Krishna, so I finished my one round, five minutes, forty seconds. Okay, so everyone can run with themselves now. All of you all can tell how many, how many minutes or you can update in the chat. We'll do that, as you are updating in the chat box, then we'll continue with the session also. Maybe at the end of the session we will discuss that. I hope everybody recorded your chanting. So today after the session is over. You can all send a message to me if you've gone through your chanting, heard your own chanting. Did you chant hundred and eight times and was your chanting pronounced, pronounced correctly or not? Today your voice low to me, oh. Okay, fine, let me check my audio settings, okay, okay. Okay, I hope it's okay now, haré Krishna, haré Krishna. Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré haré, okay, okay, fine. Okay, there was some setting issue, alright. So I would request all the devotees to do this, right? And you can update on the chat box, how long you took? I took five minutes and thirty seconds for my round, so later on I will check. Whether, whether I have chanted hundred and eight times and secondly have I pronounced the Mahammantra clearly, right? As we are chanting also sometimes you are hearing, but we don't know whether we are actually pronouncing it properly. So we can do that exercise today and then maybe you all can message me. And your timing of the chanting you can measure, you can message in the chat box. Okay, so now let's go on to our study of the book Beyond Birth and Death. So here we were talking about how the Lord is unconquerable, very difficult. It's almost impossible to conquer the Lord because he is the supreme personality of Godhead. But such a lord also becomes conquerable by the love of his devotees, right? Talking about. Yaane prayasam mudaparsyanamanta eva jeevan thi sanmukaritham bhagdiyavartham. Stani siddha shruti gataam tanuvan manohbir ye prayasho ajitajito piyasitais trilokyaam. Ajitajito, ajit means someone who can never be conquered. He becomes conquered by who? One who is engaged in the service of the Lord with their years, with their body. Tanuvan manohbir, right? So that's what is the words is talking about. One who engages in the service of the Lord with his body. Tanuvan manohbir, vakh means words, mana means mind, gatah means by hearing. When one is engaged completely in the endeavor to serve the supreme personality of Godhead. Namanta eva means one who offers obese answers under the supreme personality of Godhead. Mukaritham, mukaritham means, mukha means mouth. Mukaritham means one who is chanting the, the whole names of the Lord. One who is engaged in such service to the supreme personality of Godhead. Such a person is able to conquer the unconquerable supreme personality of Godhead. That's what Prabhupada is mentioning here. God is unconquerable, but he is conquered by the devotee who abandons mental speculation and listens to authoritative sources. So that's what is meant by. Ajitajito, the one who is unconquerable becomes conquered by a devotee. Because a devotee is engaged in devotional service of the supreme personality of Godhead. Okay, so now let's continue our reading. Yeah, okay, so devotees have they, yeah, okay, devotee, I can see some devotees raise their hands. Okay, Ramya Mataji, go ahead. According to the Brahmasamita. Hare Krishna, Dandavatpana.
Hare Krishna, Dandavatpana. There are two ways of acquiring knowledge, the ascending process and the descending process. By the ascending process, one is elevated by knowledge acquired by himself. In this way, one thinks, I don't care for any authorities or books. I will attain knowledge myself by meditation, philosophy, etc. In this way, I will understand God. The other process, the descending process involves receiving knowledge from higher authorities. The Brahmasamita states that if one takes to the ascending process and travels at the speed of mind and wind for millions of years. He will in, he will still end up not knowing. For him, the subject matter will remain elusive and inconceivable. But that subject matter is given in the Bhagavad Gita. Ananya cheta Krishna says to meditate on him without deviation from the path of devotional service in submission. For one who worships him in this way. Please scroll up Mataji. Tasyaham sulaba, I become easily available. This is the process. If one works for Krishna twenty-four hours a day, Krishna cannot forget him. By becoming submissive, he can attract the attention of God. As Guru Maharaj Bhakti Siddhanta Saraswati used to say, don't try to see God. Is God to come and stand before us like a servant just because we want to see him? That is not the submissive way. We have to oblige him by our love and service. Should we continue Mataji?
Correct, thank you Mataji. So very, very wonderful process, right? Prabhupada has given us, what is that process? Aram manmana bhava madbhakto matyaaji maam namaskaro. Twenty-four hours of the day we have engagement in the service of the Lord, right? One who worships him in this way, right? Ananya, yesterday we saw this verse, ananya cheta satatam. Right, Krishna does not want us to think of him only for the two hours of the Brahman Borata when you are chanting. After then we do whatever we like, no? Krishna wants us to think of him, ananya cheta satatam. Satatam means always eternally. Then what Krishna is saying, I become easily available. Tasyaham sulabha partha, oh partha, then it becomes easy for a person to come and, to come and conquer me. Ajitajito, right? So these two verses are related, right? And then Bhaktisindhan Saraswati talker gives a very beautiful analogy here, what does he say? He says, you know, don't try to see God, but work in a way that the God will want to see you, right? There was a very, I think I've stated it before in one of the classes, right? That in case an employee of an organization wants to meet the CEO, right? He may write several emails, but the CEO is so busy, he will not find time to meet the employee. However, the employee meets so much of sales targets, gets so much of profit for the company, right? Gets so much of goodwill for the company. And what happens, the CEO himself calls the employee, right? The CEO will ask the HR or whoever is the coordinator to call the employee and at the, at the time, the employee is free. The CEO will come in personally, meet with the employee, right? That's what it means that when we please our superior authority, then it becomes easy for us to meet them, to serve them, to please them, to, to engage with them, right? But if we are doing things according to our own whims and fancies, what we like to do, we do. But we still want to meet up, then it becomes difficult for us to meet with them. Because they are not free, free to meet us. But if you please them, then they will come forward to meet us. So we have to oblige them, Prabhupada, beautiful line Prabhupada is saying, right? We have to oblige them by our love and service. Our spiritual authority, we have to please them by our love and service. And then by their mercy, everything will happen, not by our own endeavor. Okay, so let's continue reading. Yeah, the proper process, who will read, Rishabhanu Kanya Mataji, go ahead.
Yes, Vatani, Hare Krishna, Dandavatpana.
Hare Krishna, Dandavatpana, yes.
The proper process for approaching Krishna was given to humanity by Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and Rupa Goswami. His first disciple appreciated it. Rupa Goswami was a minister in the Mahamad, Mahamadan government, but he left the government.
Yes, Mahamadan government.
Ha, Mahamadan government, but he left the government to become a disciple of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. When he first went to see the Lord. Rupa Goswami approached him with the following verses. Namom Mahavadanyaya Krishnaay Prampradainay Pradaite Krishnaay Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gaurvisri Namaha. I offer my respectful obedience unto the supreme lord, Sri Krishna Chaitanya, who is more magni, magni, magni.
Magnanimous.
Magnanimous than any other avtara. Even Krishna himself because he is bestowing freely what no one else has ever given, pure love of Krishna.
Yeah, so Krishna tells in, Mataji, once again, see Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita. Eetamam prapadyante tamstataiva pajameham. As you surrender, I will reward accordingly, that is Krishna's stance, right? That's what he is telling in Bhagavad Gita. But what does Chaitanya Mahaprabhu stance, right? Yare deke tare kahay Krishna pades. Without, without even seeing anybody's qualification. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is saying, just give Krishna name to each and every person. And following his instructions, Nityananda Prabhu is going, right? Nadia godrami, nityananda mahajan, patiachi nama hati jivar ekaran. He's opened a marketplace of the holy name, giving everybody the opportunity to chant, haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré haré, thereby purifying oneself. So very, very clearly, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is not different from Krishna. But he is the most magnanimous avatar of Lord Krishna. He is more magnanimous than even Krishna himself, right? That's why he is called most munificent. Munificent means somebody who gives charity so much profusely, right? That he does not keep anything for himself, he gives out everything. Similarly, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is so munificent that he is giving the most eligible charity, which is the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahammantra. Which is the need for every individual to attain bliss and happiness, that he is giving out profusely. That's why he is called Mahavadanyaya Avatara, namom Mahavadanyaya. Why? Because Krishna prema pradhayate, hmm, Jocna Mataji, go ahead, Rupa Goswami.
Hare Krishna Mataji, cannot pronounce. Rupa Goswami called Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, the most munificent, the most charitable personality. Because he was offering the most precious thing of all, very cheaply, the love of God. We all want Krishna and are all hankering after him. Krishna is the most attractive, the most beautiful, the most opulent, the most powerful and the most learned. That is the object of our hankering. We are hankering after the beautiful, the powerful, the learned, the wealthy. Krishna is the reservoir of all this. So we need only turn our attention toward him and we will get everything, everything whatever we want. Whatever is our heart desire will be fulfilled by this process of Krishna consciousness.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji. So akama sarva kaamova moksha kaam udhariji teevreena bhakti yogiina yajeta purusham param. Whatever desires we have, even if you want to get liberation, whatever be our hearts desired. It will all be fulfilled by the process of Krishna consciousness. Because the other day we were talking about His wellness, Bhaktira Samruthaswamy Maharaj, right? How Maharaj was saying, that when you are chanting haré Krishna, we are calling out Krishna's names. And Krishna is interested to see what we are talking, right? Just like a person is nearby, four or five people are sitting together and talking and they, and they hear our own name being called out there. And immediately our attention is drawn there, we want to go there and see what is happening. Similarly, even we are congregationally, we are chanting haré Krishna, haré Krishna, Krishna Krishna, haré haré. Haré Rama, haré Rama, Rama Rama, haré haré. We are calling out the names of the Lord. The Lord, the Lord's attentiveness or the Lord's attention is attracted by a person who is chanting haré Krishna. So whatever be our desire, our hearts desire, yet everything can be fulfilled by this process of Krishna consciousness, right? Teevreena bhakti hogaya, we have to engage in the process of devotional service. Whether or not we have any desire or whether or not we don't have any desire, right? And then what happens in this way when we engage in devotional service at all times and all days? What happens at the time of death, remembrance of Krishna becomes a natural consequence. Because it becomes a natural disposition for us like that. Alright, Sindhu Mataji, go ahead, so one who dies in Krishna consciousness.
Hare Krishna, Dandavatpana, Mataji. Dandavatpana. So one who dies in Krishna consciousness, as stated before, entrance into Krishna lok, the supreme abode where Krishna resides is guaranteed. At this point, one may ask, what the advantage is in going to that planet? And Krishna himself answers. Maupetya punarjanma dukkhalayam ashashvatam naapnuvanti mahatmanaha samsidhim paramam gataha. Gataha, after attaining me, the great souls who are yogis in devotion never return to this temporary world, which is full of miseries. Because they have attained the highest perfection, Gita eight point fifteen.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji. So here what is the same verse, right? One more verse is there, similar verse. Samsidhim paramam gataha, that person will attain highest perfection. That means what? He will attain the highest destination, right? The same thing is actually given by, given by Lord Sri Krishna in this verse. Yadgatwananivartante tad dhamaparamam mama. One who actually surrenders unto me, surrenders all of his activities in my service. What happens to him? Yadgatwananivartante tad dhamaparamam mama. Once he quits his body, he will attain my abode and that is the highest destination, isn't it? That is the greatest destination. Why? Because in this verse only Krishna himself says dukkhalayam ashashvatam. Maupetya punarjanma, right? Who will attain me after this, after the end of this life? Who will, who will transcend themselves from this world, which is dukkhalayam ashashvatam? Naapnuvanti mahatmanaha, a great souls only are able to transcend the three modes of material nature and never return to this temporary world. And where they will go, they will attain samsidhim paramam gataha, then they will attain the highest perfection. Similarly, Yadgatwananivartante, right? And then it follows that someone who attains that supreme destination, again he will not be required to come back to this temporary material world. That's what is Krishna's promise, right? Krishna says Yadgatwananivartante tad dhamaparamam mama. So Krishna has already promised, one who comes back to me, he will not have to come back to this temporary material world. This is a promise by Lord Sri Krishna. Okay, so who will read now? Lila Nanandini Mataji, go ahead. This material world is certified by Krishna, right? Label.
Hare Krishna, Dandavatpana. This material world is certified by Sri Krishna, the creator, as dukkhalayam, full of miseries. How then we can make it comfortable? Is it possible to make this world comfortable by the so-called advancement of science? No, this is not possible. As a result, we do not even wish to know what these mysteries are. The mysteries as stated before are birth, death, old age and death, birth, old age, disease and death. And because we cannot make a solution to them, we try to set them aside. Science has no power to solve these mysteries that are always giving us trouble. Instead, they divert our attention to the making of spaceships or atom bombs. The solution to these problems is given here in the Bhagavad Gita. If one attends to Krishna's platform, he does not have to return again to this earth of birth and death. We should try to understand that this place is full of mysteries. It takes a certain amount of developed consciousness to understand this. Cats and dogs and hogs cannot understand that they are suffering. Man is called a rational animal, but his rationality is being used to further his animalistic prophecies instead of to find out how to get liberation from this miserable condition. Here Krishna explicitly states that one who comes to him will never be reborn to suffer mysteries again. Those great souls who come to him have attained the highest perfection of life, which elevates the living entity from the suffering of conditional existence. Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji, very good.
Thank you, thank you, very good. Right, very, in this verse Krishna, as I actually mentioned mahatmanaha. Right, and then one more verse, nine point nine chapter also Krishna talks about mahatmanas tumam partha dhayim prakritim ashritaha. Right, in several instances Krishna has also called these people mahatmas or great people. Why do they, why do they called great people? They have a choice whom they have, whom they will surrender. Are they surrendering to the material energy, trying to enjoy sense gratification? Or are they surrendering under the supreme personality of Godhead by taking shelter of the internal pleasure potential of the Lord? Right, mahatmanas are mahatmas, mahatmas are those who take shelter of the internal energy of the Lord. Right, mahatmanas tumam partha dhayim prakritim ashritaha, they take shelter of the internal pleasure potential of the Lord, which means what? They want to serve the Lord. Here also same thing, naapnuvanti mahatmanaha samsidhim paramam gataha. Who are the ones who are actually going back home, back to Godhead? These are only these mahatmas who are engaging in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead. Otherwise, what do we do? We just go around in this world in the cycle of janma, vittu, jarah and vyadi. Birth, death, disease, old age, then again death and then birth and then death, again birth, right? Najayate mrete va kadachin ayam bhutva bhavita vana bhuyaha, right? Bhutva bhavita bhuyaha, right? We were existing in the past, we will exist in the present, we come in the future also. But unfortunately, the soul is simply transmigrating from one body to another. Although the soul is eternal, it is subject to, subject to the mysteries because of the material body that we are attaching ourselves to. Because of unconditional, unlimited desires to enjoy independent of the Lord. But the moment we understand that I am, if I serve the Lord, then all my desires also will be fulfilled. That will be the time when we can relieve ourselves of the attachment to this material body and that is when, when we can get into the real ego. Of jivares parupai krishneri nityadas, then we will be able to go back home back to Godhead. So that is the Yadgatwananivartante tad dhamma, that dhamma is paramam mama. That dhamma is Krishna is saying, paramam mama, that dhamma is a supreme destination and it is my place, right? Whoever perfects their lives, come back to my place and then they don't have to get down into this material world. Okay, Karpa Gavili Mataji, go ahead. One of the differences.
Thank you Mataji, Dandavatpana.
Hare Krishna, Dandavatpana.
One of the differences between Krishna and an ordinary being is that. A, is that an ordinary entity can be only in one place at a time. Krishna can be everywhere in the universe and yet also his own abode simultaneously. Krishna's abode in the transcendental kingdom is called Goloka Brindavana. Krishna's abode in the transcendental kingdom is called Goloka Brindavana. The Brindavana in India is that same Brindavana descended on, on this earth. When Krishna descends himself by his own internal potency, his dhamma or abode also descends. In other words, when Krishna descends on, on this earth, he manifests himself in that particular land. Despite this, Krishna, Krishna's abode remains eternally in the transcendental sphere in the Vaikundas. In this verse, Krishna takes birth again in the material world. Such a person is called-
Ah, in this verse Krishna proclaims.
Sorry Mataji. In this verse Krishna proclaims that one who comes to this, to his abode in the Vaikundas never has to take birth again in the material world. Such a person is called mahatma. The word mahatma is generally heard in the ways in connection with Mahatma Gandhi. But we should understand that mahatma is not the title of a politician. Rather mahatma refers to the first-class Krishna conscious man who is eligible to enter into the abode of Krishna. The mahatmas perfection is in, is this to utilize the human form of life and the resources of nature to extricate himself from the cycle of birth and death.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji. Yeah, so October second, we celebrated Mahatma Gandhi appearance, right? Birthday of Mahatma Gandhi. But mahatma is not a person who is very successful in the material world, right? That, that you cannot say that about Mahatma Gandhi also. Because Prabhupada wrote so many letters to Mahatma Gandhi that he also told that you will die in glorious death if you don't take up the process of Krishna consciousness. But unfortunately for Mahatma Gandhi, he could not take up the process of Krishna consciousness, at least at that time when Prabhupada was actually urging him to do so. So, actual mahatma is not a person who is, you know, who has high moral character, who has also a high, you know, a rich person, who is able to get things done in the material world because those people become famous and then people always say they are mahatmas and then they start garlanding him, make statues for him, etc. But those are not actual mahatmas, right? Prabhupada mentions here, the real mahatma is one who is, who ensures that he himself does not take birth in this material world again and also helps others to not get into this world of suffering and dukkhalayam and ashashvatam. One who helps others and himself to get out of this material world, to go back to that abode of the Lord where one can enjoy transcendental bliss. That person is a mahatma, right? The mahatmas perfection is this, what does he do? He utilizes the human form of life and the resources to extricate himself from the cycle of birth and death. So, that is a mahatma, not any person who is successful materially is not a mahatma, right? So, yeah. Okay, so finally, Nam Kishori Mataji, we'll end with you. An intelligent person knows from there.
Hare Krishna Mataji, Dhanvathpanam.
Hare Krishna, Dhanvathpanam.
An intelligent person knows that he does not want miseries, but they are inflicted upon, upon him by force. As stated before, we are always in a miserable condition due to this mind-body, natural disturbances or other living entities. There is always some kind of misery inflicted upon us. This material world is meant for misery. Unless the misery is there, we cannot come to Krishna consciousness. Miseries are actually an impetus and help to elevate us to Krishna consciousness. And intelligent men, questions why these miseries are inflicted on him by force? However, modern civilizations' attitude is, let me suffer, let me cover it by some intoxication, that's all. But as soon as the intoxication is over, the misery is returned. It is not possible to take, make a solution to the misery, to the miseries of life by artificial intoxication. The solution is made by Krishna consciousness. Hare Krishna Mataji, Dhanvathpanam.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Dhanvathpanam. So, like, like we have a pustakalayam, means it's a, it's a place where books are kept. Similarly, Krishna calls this place dukkhalayam. That means what we can find in this world, we can find, just like we can find pustaka, but we can find books in a pustakalayam. Similarly, we can find dukkha in a dukkhalayam. But what do we do? We want, we want happiness in this dukkhalayam, but we don't know the right way. So, what do we do? We just get into intoxication, we get into oversleeping mode and then what happens in that ignorance? We forget what is actual situation and then we think we are in bliss, right? Because we don't know, which is somebody who drinks, you know, lies down on the road. Nah, it's in worse situation than what he was, but he thinks he's in bliss because he forgets his problems, right? Ignorance of the problems, there's not, it's not a solution to the problem because the problem is always existing. It is only that I have put up, I have just blindfolded myself that I don't see the problem myself, right? And then some of us, you know, oversleep, right? When we sleep, we are so happy, when we get up, then we think everything is resolved, time will cure everything. Yeah, it's true to some extent, we have to tolerate some difficulties, right? Time is the best cure, but we cannot, we cannot try to escape our problems by simply blindfolding ourselves either by taking intoxication or by sleeping or doing anything like that. So, what is the only way by which we can make a solution to these miseries of life, right? Artificial intoxication is not the solution. The only solution is Krishna consciousness, right? So, that is why Prabhupada is mentioning here, um, I, miseries are actually impetus for us to elevate ourselves to Krishna consciousness. Right, we also seen Bhagavatam, how Kunti Marani is saying, right? Vipada taktu tath sashvat, right? Vipada means I want more and more miseries to come to me, right? Of course, I'm not asking that we should ask for miseries to the Lord, right? But when miseries do come, then what, what should the devotee's attitude be? Devotee's attitude is to surrender more towards the supreme personality of Godhead. When there are troubles, when there are difficulties, when we know that we can't be in control, then we know we have to surrender to that person who is in control of everything. That person who is bhoktaram yajnita pasam sarvalokam maheshwaram, suhrulam sarva bhutanam nyatvam am shantim rachati. If I want peace, if I want to remain out of anxiety, if I want to get out of a miserable condition, I need to surrender unto that person who can relieve me of that anxiety, who can relieve me of the misery. Why? Because he is in control of everything, whereas I am not. Since we are being depending on those people who themselves are in miserable situation in the material world, we should depend and surrender to that Lord, right? And this bajahure mana shri nanda nanda na abhayachara nara vinda re. If you want fearlessness, if you want to be without anxiety, if you want to be without miseries, ah, that is, they say, right? Pain is inevitable, suffering is optional. So, we have the Ramabhan with us, right? Which can solve all our problems, but we forget to use the Ramabhan. What is that? Surrender to the Supreme Lord. When we surrender to Krishna, Krishna does Yogakshimam bahamiham. We need to have faith in the Lord, right? That Lord will protect me in whatever situation I am. The Lord is in complete control of the situation and the Lord is my best friend, my best benefactor. What is the need for me to be in anxiety, right? That's why it is said that Arjuna, he told that tomorrow by sunset, I'm going to kill Jayatrata. Happily, he slept in the night and Krishna is worried, oh my God, how will Arjuna kill Jayatrata before sunset? Because he's already declared it, all of them will ensure that protection of Jayatrata, they will hide him in a place. How is Arjuna going to fulfill? And then Arjuna happily said, otherwise I will die, I will enter into fire of fire and I will die. And then Arjuna is happily sleeping and then Krishna is saying, hey, Arjuna, what do you make this promise? You're happily sleeping, then Arjuna is saying, that's your problem, right? Because that is why even in Dagaasura demon, right? All the Gopas, they're all rushing into that, that new cave-like structure there, they're all rushing inside. They're not worried, why? Because they know, we get into any trouble, Krishna is there to protect us, right? Avasha rakshibe Krishna, this is one of the limbs of surrender to the supreme personality of Godhead. Avasha rakshibe Krishna, Krishna will protect me in all circumstances, so there is no need for me to worry. Of course, it does not mean surrender in two ways. One is Droupani's kind of surrender. See, Droupani tried all methods to protect herself, but when she realized that nothing is working, she just surrendered. She just lifted her arms and surrendered to the Lord. Arjuna also surrendered, there is no difference. Arjuna also surrendered to the Lord, but how did Arjuna surrender? Arjuna surrendered to the instructions of the Lord because the Lord asked him to fight, right? So, similarly, our surrender to the Lord is according to what is instruction that has been given to us by my spiritual master, by our Shri La Prabhupada. Shri La Prabhupada says, whatever be the situation, chant Hare Krishna and be happy. So, that is our instruction. So, we follow that instruction, chant Hare Krishna, remember Krishna, smartavya satatam vishnur, vismartavyo najatuchit, sarve vidhi nishiyas or ehtay or eva inkaraaha. Whatever situation, I have to remember the Lord because the Lord is the one who is going to protect me. And how I'm going to remember the Lord? I'm going to remember the Lord by chanting Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare Hare. Right, in this way, when we chant Hare Krishna, even in adverse circumstances, ah, then this beautiful verse of Shrimad Bhagavatam, it says, ah, that liberation becomes a rightful claim of such a person who continues to be surrendered to the Lord in all situations, whether of calamity, whether of happiness, right? Tatene nakampam susame ikshamano bhunjana eva atmakritam vipakam, hridvad vapurveer vidadan namaste. Right, in our heart, by our words, hridvad vapur, by our body, we offer obeisance to the Lord, we are thankful to the Lord for all the situations. Then jiveeta mukti padesa dayabak. Such a person becomes entitled to liberation even being situated in this material world. So, what is our consciousness? Are we trying to control the situations, trying to control that, you know, my, my ability, I'm going to control this situation? Or are we surrendering to the Lord by remembering the Lord, by chanting Hare Krishna? We're surrendering to the Lord. In this way, the Lord will protect us. Yogakshimam bahamiham, the Lord will carry what we lack and will preserve what we have, right? But we should not have that expectation towards the Lord, right? But what are we supposed to do from our side? We do our work and then we depend on Krishna. What is our work? Our work is to chant Hare Krishna, follow the regular principles and be surrendered to the Lord in all circumstances. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare Hare. Jagatguru Shri La Prabhupada ki jai, Shri Gurudeva ki jai, anantakoti vaishnavavrindha ki jai, nitaigora premanande, hari hari bol. So, now it's Darshan time of all the devotees. So, let's have Darshan of the devotees and then go to Harinam Shankirtan and then we'll end our session today. So, we have our Jyotsna Mataji today, Karpa Gavali Mataji, Ramya Mataji, Asmita Mataji probably joined us for the first time in this session, okay? Anjuna Mataji is there, Sindhu Mataji, we're not able to see you clearly, but you have your camera on. Okay, who else? Anjuna Mataji is there, Nav Kishori Mataji is there. All right, so thank you very much. Pancha kalpata rugi ascha kripa sindhu ge evacha, patiithana bhavani bhyo vaishnave bhyo namo namaha. Anantakoti vaishnavavrindha ki jai, jagatguru Shri La Prabhupada ki jai. Nitaigora premanande hari hari bol. All glories to the assembled devotees, Hare Krishna, all glories to the assembled devotees, Hare Krishna. All glories to the assembled devotees, Hare Krishna, all glories, all glories, all glories to Sri Sri Guru and Sri Gaurangam. Krishna 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 he. Krishna 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 he. Krishna kesava Krishna kesava Krishna kesava paakima. Ramraagava Ramraagav Ramraagava raksamah. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare Hare. Jaya Gauranitai, 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 Gauranitai. Jaya Jaya Prabhu Paan, Prabhu Paan, Guru De, Guru De. Ekta Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol. Jagatguru Shri La Prabhupada Shri Gurudeva ki jai, Harinam Shankirtan ki jai, Nitaigora premanande hari hari bol. Hare Krishna, so all devotees can unmute themselves now. So, if in case anyone has any questions or any comments, then we can take that, otherwise we can end the session now. Hare Krishna. Anything from any of the devotees? Okay, so Hare Krishna, thank you very much for joining in. Meet you all tomorrow morning for five AM for the Brahmanmurti chanting session and then we'll meet at twelve forty-five or one PM tomorrow for the Prabhupada book study session. Jagatguru Shri La Prabhupada ki jai, Shri Gurudeva ki jai, Anantakoti vaishnavavrindha ki jai, Nitaigora premanande hari hari bol. Hare Krishna, thank you very much.